All right, it is five o'clock and we have a quorum. So we will begin the zoning board of appeal meeting at seven o'clock on June 11th. And the first order would be to approve the minutes from the last meeting. That would be January 23rd. Has everyone had an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any changes or comments, considerations?
None here.
Okay. Without any, any comments, then I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Or I guess I should ask somebody if someone wants to make a motion. I was not at the meeting, I'm sorry.
I motion to approve.
And when you, when you, we should actually do a little bit of background. I'm sorry, I didn't expect you to jump into minutes right away.
Oh, okay.
Some procedure quickly. So Paul Reisler is serving as the mayor's appointment for chair, which is something the state statute provides. So Paul Reisler is chair for the next year of the board.
Hi, do you want to go potty? Oh, sorry, bud.
Yourself, if you are, yeah. Also, I want to say that we are video recording the meeting so that, just as we do with all of our Zoom meetings, that they are accessible, more accessible to the public afterwards. And those get uploaded to our YouTube channel. So I want to mention that as well. And we have a new member, Dave Schultz, who I don't know if he, oh, there he is. So Dave, maybe if you can unmute yourself and say something, then you will be, pop up on people's screens. Do you know how to unmute yourself? So far, he has not done it. So Dave, there he is.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Very good. I'm Dave Schultz, and I'm a new member to the board, moved to Middleton about last March, and happy to be here on a retirement basis and very involved in municipal government back in Lake Delta, Wisconsin, and look forward to be a part of this group.
Welcome, Dave.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Maybe you can each introduce yourself quickly, each zoning board member. Mr. Veronica, how about you first, since you're alphabetical first?
Okay. I'm John Veronica. I live in Middleton, Milton Hills. We moved here in 2016 from Connecticut, and I've been a member of the board since, I think.
It was last year.
Yeah, just last year.
Yeah.
And I've enjoyed participating, and I'm a realtor in town.
And Justin, you're alphabetically next.
Hi, guys. Can you see me? Hear me?
Yep.
There you are. Perfect. Hey, guys. I'm Justin Bowig. I've been a resident of Middleton since 2012, 13, somewhere in there. I'm an architect in the community, and I've been part of the zoning board for, I think, a couple of years now, probably 2018. Is that's all right?
Maybe even a little longer. And I take it you're using.
Maybe longer.
I take it you're using a kid's login, Zoom login.
Oh, it says Peyton. Yep, this is what my daughter uses for her school.
So, thank you. Next, we have, I guess, Bob, if you're online, I haven't seen you yet.
You don't see me?
Bob Mangus.
There you are. Okay, I just wasn't.
Yeah, no, I've been here since the beginning. Bob Mangus, and I've been serving on this board for about a year. I've lived in Middleton since 1995, and also am an architect, and have been, my career going on 36 years, so enjoy helping out on this committee.
And congratulations on your promotion. I don't know if you're aware of that, but since we have a new member, Dave Schultz is, is an alternate now, so you got promoted to regular member.
All right, thank you.
Right.
And next, we have the first alternate, the promotion to first alternate is Katie Nelson. Katie's there, but she's muted. She's still muted.
Here I am. Sorry about the doggy, the doggy command earlier. I'm Katie Nelson. I'm a business owner here in town. I own Zuka Pilates, and I'm an alder for the third district. And I've been on the zoning board of appeals for two or three years, Mark? Couple of years?
Yeah, a couple of years, I would guess. Yeah, just before you became a council member.
Yeah, so my question for tonight is, is everyone who needs to vote on board tonight? Or will you need me to vote?
I think we have all, all seven members present with the two alternates. Let me double check here. So in other words, two, one, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, and Schultz is new. So Dave is here. Mark Wolford, I think, is here too. Yeah, Mark's there. Yeah, I think, so we have seven people. And does anybody, is anybody wishing to, or planning to abstain for any reason? You could ask that too. On either of the two applications, does anyone have a conflict of interest that would cause the alternates to have a chance to vote? And hearing none, technically, that means alternates could be excused if they wish, but you're certainly welcome to stay. And if for some reason, you know, and be part of the deliberative process, it's just you wouldn't be voting. You wouldn't be voting unless somebody doesn't vote. So, so in theory, if somebody gets bumped off the Zoom call, I guess in theory, then an alternate member would vote. So I know Dave, are you planning on staying?
Yes, I'd like to stay.
Okay. So Katie, if you wished to.
I will plan on staying for the meeting, so that's okay.
Okay, yep, it is. But since you asked the question, I thought maybe you were.
Yeah. Perfect. So I didn't know if you need to go on with more introductions, so thank you.
We have Paul Reisler as chair. He's already introduced himself. Right. You've been on for a few years, Paul, right?
Yes.
And then last, but not least, is Mark Wolford.
Mark Wolford, yeah, resident. I can't even remember how many years, but I've been on the board for what, 10 or 12 years? Something like that.
Seems like 20.
Seems like 20, all right. So, I don't know, I've been on it for a while.
I'm just teasing you.
Good to see everybody.
Yep. So that's introductions, since we had new members, I thought that would be appropriate now if you want to go to them. And I don't think I have any other instructions. I did announce that this is being recorded. And I'd sent you earlier some, you know, as a reminder with the zoning handbook that Stevens Point, W. Stevens Point puts out, containing procedures and all that. We've had a chance to review that. So I'll turn it back over to you, Paul, and why don't you go back to the minutes?
All right, now, Mark, thanks for pausing me there. My exuberance has started ripping right into the agenda. So does, can someone make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 23rd?
I'll make that motion. I motion, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our last meeting.
Okay, can someone second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I didn't hear, who, who are you recognizing as the second, Mr. Chairman?
Justin?
Okay.
That's fine. Yeah, I think John and I both talked at the same time, so.
Oh, you did? Okay.
It won't be the first time.
Probably not, no.
Okay, so then moving on to our first.
You need to call for a vote on the minutes.
Oh, I, thanks. Can, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Mark, hi.
Any names?
There you go.
Okay, before we start with the first agenda item, I'd like to make a motion. And that is that the zoning board of appeal thanks Marty Burkhilder for 11 years of service to the board. I second that motion.
Sure, it's not on the agenda, but we'll put it.
Figure out a place for it.
Well, how about under the introductions and call to order, can we just, instead of making it as a motion, can we just request, well?
Can it be part of the public comments?
Yeah, well, there aren't public, well, no, not on the, how about we, Mark, first of all, I think it's a great sentiment. But I think if we do it after the introductions, we'll say zoning board members express their, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but why don't you, let's put it in that way. So go ahead and state what you were going to say.
I just, the zoning board of appeals would like to thank Marty Burkhilder for 18 years of service to the zoning board of appeals. And if you want to put it at the end, after we close the meeting, and just say it as an aside or something. Just as long as it kind of gets on the record.
And if we were all together, we could have had a card or something for you to sign, but we, but I'll make sure this gets extended to him, so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Hey, Mark, one, one other thing. So, so Paul is the new chair. Is there, has there anybody moved into Paul's?
The vice chair?
So, do we need to vote on that, or has things changed that that's appointed now?
Well, good question. So we, I looked at state statute recently, this past week, when I was trying to get materials together for Mr. Schultz. And I thought this is a good chance just to review state statute. I was surprised to see that it says the mayor appoints the chairperson. It does not say anything about the vice chair. I don't see any harm in, I mean, we don't have it on the agenda right now, but I think if Paul were not present, you would then, you know, at a future meeting, I think you could then just elect an acting chair. That, it does, I think there was reference to that in state statute. So right now, I don't see a need to have a vice chair, and electing one now would not be appropriate. But I'll, I'll look into that again, and we'll figure that out for the next meeting. So this was kind of a last minute, I had planned to have election of officers until I saw that language in state statute. The reason I really wasn't familiar with it is because Dr. Wagenke had been chair of this for over two decades, and it just never came up. And then when he left, then you guys had an election like we do all of our committees, or most of our committees. So, but now that I know, I, so I asked the mayor to appoint a member, and he chose, he selected Paul.
And you made a wise choice.
All right.
All right. Okay, so we can add that as a future agenda item to vote for a vice chair.
That's fine.
Okay. Any other comments before we move on to our first agenda item?
No.
Okay, so moving on to our first agenda item for June 11th, Mark, could you review the application, please, at 2501 Middleton Beach Road?
Sure. So this is part of the, are you opening the hearing?
Yes, I'm opening the hearing.
So the hearing's opened at 5:12.
5:12.
Okay. So what we have before us tonight is an application for a variance from Michelle Bond of 2501 Middleton Beach Road. She's requesting a variance from the minimum rear setback for an R1 zone property for the purpose of constructing a deck exceeding four feet and height above ground level. I will add that her property largely consists of stairs, but I have determined that we are treating that the same as a deck, under the provision of a deck and stairs encroaching into the rear yard. The deck would extend six feet into the rear setback, and the majority of the structure would exceed the height of four feet, with the tallest part rising seven feet above the ground. Section 10.24 of the ordinance requires a minimum rear setback of 30 feet, which for this lot is measured from the ordinary high watermark. And then we have a section 10.22 parentheses F that states that the deck, a deck greater than four feet above ground level is considered part of the structure and must adhere to the minimum rear setback of 30 feet. An existing set of non-compliant stairs are currently on the site. So that's what was included in the hearing notice. And so her application is for a variance to allow the deck, which, and staircase, which needs to be modified to adhere to building code standards, to allow that to be permitted as an encroachment into the rear setback.
Now, Mark, this, the design we're talking about now, is this the one that's reflected in her new picture she sent us?
So.
Or the old one?
What was sent this, so there's a photo showing the existing deck. I think it was somewhere in your materials, the existing staircase, let's just call it.
That's existing.
Yep, that's existing. And the reason, so she built that, it didn't have a landing at the top as required by building code. So before taking occupancy, the, before issuing an occupancy permit, the building inspector flagged that as part of the issuance of the term of the occupancy, and required that there be a, this, this barrier at the top to prevent its use because it didn't comply with building code regulations. So then if you can go to the next picture, Daphne, by the way, Daphne Schuh, we didn't introduce. Dave, she is the associate planner, and she is, is, is driving the slides tonight. So she's, she's my colleague, and she joined us at the, about a year ago.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. And she's quiet, so you haven't heard from her.
Hi, Daphne.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, there.
Sorry, we, I forgot to introduce you, Daphne. So, so what you see here before you on the screen is something that the applicant provided this afternoon. And it shows an attempt to minimize the encroachment into the rear setback. It provides the landing at the top. This, a few steps going down, and then obviously it turns back, and so it minimizes the, this is the maximum way to minimize the encroachment rear setback. And I'll let her speak to that, but that's, that's essentially the variance request right here. I did, I will report that I did a site inspection in April, I think it was, late April, and saw the deck that you saw, the staircase that you saw, staircase deck. And did talk to the applicant at the time and advised of the need for the variance. At this point, Mr. Chair, it's appropriate to turn it over to the applicant.
Thanks, Mark. So who, who do we have here to speak on behalf of 2501?
Yep. Hello, my name's Michelle Bond, and I am the homeowner and the builder. The, I acted as the general contractor, as the owner for building our new home at 2501 Middleton Beach Road. So I did come before the variance board, one other time, actually two other times, but one other time regarding the house. And that was around September 2019. And at that time, I was told that this was the setback that I could do. We, the board thought that the zoning went with the land. So the old home was 27 foot off the ordinary highway watermark for the majority of the home. And then it dove back the three feet to get us back to the 30 foot off the ordinary highway watermark. And that section is where the sliding glass door is. And that was on the plans at the time when we shared, back in September. So we built the home, and as Mark mentioned, the home has stairs, but it doesn't have the landing due to the number of treads that there are. So we need to get a landing, and then use stairs basically to get to the water, which is why we built on this particular site to get to Lake Mendota. I did submit my plans. Daphne, do you mind showing, going through the slides that I sent? The issues that.
Yeah, of course.
Most, could you go to that with the issues with the stairs off the back of the house? And then I can kind of go through those slides. Yep, so go to the first page if you don't mind.
First page?
Yes, please. Thank you. Right there, perfect. Yep. So that is showing what the current stairs look like. And you can see that there's a rail across, because the building permit said that I needed to do that because it weren't code compliant for building. And then at the same time of that, I was told in terms of zoning that going into the rear setback with these stairs was not allowed. So I needed to apply for this variance. If we go to the next slide, that shows the, what the configuration could look like. So building permit says that I need to have a 36 inch, or 36 inch, three foot wide stairs is the minimum. So I'm trying to design new stairs that are, will have the least intrusion into the lake setback. And then if we go to the third slide, my neighbors to the right and left, that's Marilyn and Catherine. And they have said that they could live with those stairs as we suggested. So those are their signatures on those, that page, that slide. And then if you turn to the next slide, we have two neighbors that are then to the south of us. Dan and Terry Fess, and Emily and Sam are the house farther away. And those are the whole families, or the homes that can see the said stairs as we are proposing. And they've all said that it sounds reasonable, and they signed off on these, as you can see from those slides. And then as the process continues with doing a variance, it says the review of alternates, alternatives. So the, the possibility is we have no stairs to get to the lake, which would be pretty sad and a hardship. And trying to remodel the home to be able to put stairs internally on there, that would take a big chunk out of the house. And when I submitted for the permit, the building permit, I had to do wind shears and things like that, and structural things. So I, when I've talked to several engineers and a couple of different CAD people, they thought that, they don't think that it's even possible, even if I spent $60,000 or $100,000 to kind of break into the existing home to be able to get internal stairs. And then the next page kind of shows, the next slide shows what the current inside of the home looks like. The slide on the left is the first floor, and then the slide on the right is the basement floor, the basement level. And then if we go to the next slide, the imposition of the hardship. So when I submit the plans, I have to submit them through zoning and through the building permit. And I submitted back in October 22nd, 2019, and then again on November 5th. So the reason that I had to submit the plans twice is because originally we were just going to do a crawl. So we were going to do just a crawl down there, and then I thought, well, we're going to have stairs everywhere, no matter what, so why not just add two more feet above ground? So then we could have the full basement. So that's why I had to apply the two times. So this was before the zoning and the building permit, two times. And I, I take great pride in what I do. And it's a, it's a big undertaking, but it's something that I very much enjoy. And I'm more than willing to do whatever we need to do to correct this. But I did go in with the intention of showing on my plans, so on the, the site plan, the overhead that I submitted, the rear steps were not on that, but they were on every other plan except for, when I look on my elevation for the, so when you, as many of you know, when you submit your plans, you do overhead plans for the first floor, second floor, and basement, and then you do different elevations for the front, the rear, and the left and the right. So on the right elevation, the stairs were not noted on there, but they were noted everywhere else. So there were stairs on the plan. And then the last slide, the imposition of hardship. It's kind of hard having this flagged now that the home is done. If it was flagged when I had the foundation, or before I got the plans drawn up, or I started construction, it would have been more feasible for me to fix the things that, or to make the changes so that we were within the setbacks. So, yeah. And then, and then if you look at the last slide, Daphne, please, there's the picture. And that just kind of shows the view from the steps to show the homes. So where that white is, that's like a little sailboat, that's Marilyn's house. And she understands and agrees with what we're proposing. And then the home next to that with all the windows, that's the fast home. And then the farthest house that you can see, that's Emily and Sam's home. And so those are the four different families that we showed what we're proposing, and they thought it was acceptable what we were proposing. So we've tried to talk to the neighbors and be mindful of what their concerns and considerations are, and that's such things. So I guess that's all I have to share right now.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Mark, is there any other staff reporting or correspondence that you've received?
I have not received any correspondence from the public. I did receive an inquiry today, but I asked him if he needed, if he was leaving a statement of any kind. He said no, so that's, there's no report there for the public record. And, I'm sorry?
Oh, you know, go, go ahead.
Well, and I just wanted to note that I added to the packet some additional materials which you received yesterday regarding the, my thought process in April for, and my rationale for why I determined that this needed to be granted as zoning variance. And so that's included in the packet, as well as previous materials from last September. The, the variance hearing in the packet, and the building plan that she, for which she got, for which Ms. Bond got the zoning.
From the 12th, correct? Okay.
Well, that's, well, the packet, the, the minutes of the, the previous zoning variance that she mentioned, where there is actually not a variance granted because she decided to alter the plans to comply with existing, existing variance that had been granted. So I provided those minutes, and then also provided you with the packet that was part of the building permit and zoning permit application in late September.
Okay.
I wasn't sure, though, what the plans that were submitted on October 22nd. Michelle, you just mentioned, I wasn't aware that there were plans submitted on that day. So that, just for my notes, I'm trying to understand what, what you're referring to there.
Yeah, so, um, yes. So I have, I requested from Jim, who's the current building inspector, to give me a copy of the permit as I, and if Daphne scrolls down, you can keep scrolling down if you're seeing that. Yep, Daphne, that's great. And so you can see on those overheads, you can see the stairs for the overhead there. And so that's what I originally submitted. And then again, when I changed it to a basement, I then had to go through and add the basement and add the, the changes to the plans.
So that wasn't, that wasn't submitted to the zoning board of appeals, Mark? That was submitted to.
Daphne forwarded to, then I think it was Bill, who was acting as the building inspector who was issuing the permits.
Yeah, so that wasn't zoning board that got that.
Correct. Yeah, none of, none of that was reviewed by zoning board because we determined that that was, you know, based on the site plan review and the elevations. With, you know, that, I mean, I can't speak for Daphne, but she, I support her decision to grant the, grant the permit. The zoning permit based on the materials that were submitted last September.
Yeah.
Before we go too much further, I want to provide an opportunity, before we start asking more in-depth questions, are there any, any other neighbors or members of the public who wish to speak about this particular variance?
Sure, I can speak. I'm Rick Lemon. I'm about four or five doors to the north. I think her proposed plans for the tight staircase are very reasonable, and they look good, and they serve the purpose.
Rick, would you, for the record, we need your address too.
Okay, 2519 Middleton Beach Road.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Emily Kuhn, and my husband Sam Rakowski. We're at 2425 Middleton Beach Road, and I concur with Mr. Lemon. So does Sam.
Yes, me too.
We support the, the staircase as presented.
Sam, what is your last name, please?
Rakowski, it's spelled R as in Robert, A as in Adam, J as in John, K-O-W-S-K-I.
Okay.
I'm sorry, R-A-K.
R-A-J as in John.
R-A-J, okay. Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
And, and your address, Sam, please?
2420. I'm 2425 Middleton.
Same one. Okay, all right, thank you.
I don't know if there's anyone else. There are some people present, but we have another variance here as well, so.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this application?
Okay. Then does the board have any, any other follow-up questions for Michelle or Mark? Uh, then does the board have any, any other follow-up questions for Michelle or Mark?
Mark, is there, um, as far as this, the left or the, would be south um, side setback, where are they at with that at this point?
Um.
So the reason I ask, I was wondering if, if the stair were to wrap around the south side of that house. Would that, would that then require?
I see your point.
Probably a big backyard setback.
Yeah, they.
I'm assuming it is, but I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, they built pretty close to the, their setbacks. Um, thanks, Daphne.
Four foot eight is the set required, right? On the side.
Mark, do you want me to?
Go ahead.
So um, we have forty-seven foot in the width. So normally it is that four foot eight, but for this um, we had to go, I think it was five foot ten, if I'm recalling. Um, that was what, since we had that extra seven foot, um, we had to um, have a little bit more. And I think we did five foot eleven is what's drawn on the, the survey or the site plan. So we, you know, we were, we have an inch wiggle room kind of thing.
Okay.
So a forty-foot setback is normally um, we're getting a message here, which is unusual. Although somebody, it's doing, it's a chat, I guess. Why don't we?
Support of the application.
Yeah, let me just uh, this is the first for me. Okay, so we can accept that. It's like a written statement. Um, I'll, I'll just read it. It's Paul Demusto, twenty-six oh three Middleton Beach Road and supports the application as well, so. Um, and that's a first for me to get public comment via a chat and that's, that's perfectly acceptable, so. I just didn't want to miss it for later. Okay, um, this is like a registration for a meeting. Um, let me get out of that. So uh, the setback, we're talking about setbacks. So yeah, the forty-seven, so having a forty-seven foot by lot of seven feet times two inches is fourteen, seven feet times. No, yeah, it's thirteen feet. I'm sorry, forty. So she's thirteen feet off the um, minimum of sixty feet, thirteen times two is twenty-six inches, which would be five feet and inches. Yeah, so she's, so the setback is five feet, ten inches, yep.
Okay, but no room to wrap this here, it doesn't look like, so.
But, no, because, yeah, that's correct.
Yep.
We have another registrant.
Right, uh, Diane. Um, and we need her last name.
I, yeah, Diane, uh, twenty-four, twenty-nine. Uh, supports. Okay, Diane, can you type your last name, please, for the record? Otherwise I can look. Oh. Oh, I see.
Marilyn, yes.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
Uh, Michelle, I have a question for you. Um, you know, I'm going back to the, when you were back in September, September twelfth, twenty nineteen, you know, we discussed your, your plan. And at that time, there was somewhat of an encroachment into the easement, if I remember correctly, on the Lake Mendota side. And you then notched the building to accommodate that setback, but then uh, at that point in time, we had taken a look at the, at the plans, uh, the site plan, and there was no indication that there was going to be a stair or doors, for that matter, on the lakeside. Um, and then um.
Daphne, are you able to pull up the application at that time? Um, from that meeting, are you able to pull up what would have been submitted at that time?
Uh, no, I don't have it right now. I can look for it late and pull it up a little later.
I can probably, oh, okay, she wants to do that, that's fine. Otherwise I can um, find it pretty quickly because I'm in that folder.
I'm just trying to get some historical background because we saw you in twenty nineteen. And now when I'm looking at that packet of information, those plans do vary from what was submitted uh, for your building permit.
So there, and my recollection is, and Daphne or Mark can pull it up if possible, um, is there always was a slider there? Because we always wanted, you know, a point of access from the lakes to the lakeside. So um, we had, hopefully this will pull up, but um, yeah, we always had a slider there.
Oh, yeah, I see, I see that, yeah. I do see the slider in the plan, I'm sorry. But, you know, on the site plan and even on the building plans, there was no indication there were stairs.
Um, on the site plan, you are correct. My CAD person did not do that and I, you know, we did not talk about it. Daphne and I had talked about a lot about the front stairs being out of the setback and um, you know, we had the, we had the plans, as I said, the overhead for the different floor plans and the elevations. Now, like I said, the one elevation from the side did not have the stairs, but all of the other floor plans for the first and second and had the overhead with the stairs.
Daphne, I found it if you want, unless, well, you're basically there. Okay, never mind, we'll just go with you.
Thank you, thank you for pulling that up.
Right, that's the home you removed?
So that was the site plan there. Oh, no, that's this.
There you go. Yep, there, there's the, the building plan with the slider.
Yep.
Oh, I see. And so can you go to the site plan above it too, please, Daphne? So again, this is from the September twelfth meeting. So I think this was, yeah, this is the proposed footprint, not going into the, so uh, the east, the bottom is the east. Okay, there we go. And at the time, the zoning board uh, didn't support and, and, and with through discussion with the applicant uh, said, well, only a part of that, like two-thirds, the, the right two-thirds, if you will, uh, where it says dur in line, I would say, that part was allowed to encroach into the rear setback based on a variance granted in the nineties for the previous structure. And since variances run with the land, uh, that was retained. Uh, and then the part that says MEA, you know, that part there, thank you, Daphne. Uh, that you asked her to modify, you asked, or you advised Michelle to uh, modify the plan so that it wouldn't encroach. And that's why her um, plan now is a staggered, uh, you know, it has a step in it. Or, you know, you know what I mean? It's, it's a, it's not a flush facade.
Yep.
So. And then, Daphne, can you go back to slide number seven, two of the slides, when you get a chance?
But this is what, this is why the zoning board of appeals didn't see a set of steps. Uh, because the plan that we looked at in September, I did not have them.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. The only time you added steps, Michelle, was after you, you set the house back in order to get out of the the rear yard setback.
Well, I, if you look, if you look at this, this slide that Daphne just pulled up, thank you, Daphne. Um, you can see that there were steps on the rear elevation. Um, so there were steps when we were just five foot out of the ground. And then there were still the same steps that went up two feet when we added the basement.
Right, but Michelle, this is a plan, this is an elevation showing the setback of the house that was not on the plan that we first met with in September.
Daphne, are you able to, to, to pull up the whole packet of what they would have saw in September to what I submitted?
In September, the rear of the house went straight across.
Yes, yes.
It did not jog. Okay, that's all the zoning board of appeals ever saw.
Right, and I, I don't recall seeing, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
Um, I can hear that the back of the house was straight, yep, so that we were twenty-seven foot off the ordinary high water for the whole width of the house. But there would have been um, the plans, I, I, I believe I showed, because I'm trying to think, I think it was Mark. Um, it made the suggestion of we just jog in that area and there was the drawing of a slider door on there. So we knew that the slider was the area that was going to jog back in.
It was a window though, not a patio door.
It's always been a patio door.
So when you originally brought the plan in September.
Yep.
See, that's not a, oh, it's a patio door.
It says patio door.
That could be a ground level.
Well, we're still going to be, um, you know, five foot off the ground because um, you know, the ordinary, the high watermark is so um, the water, like ground level is so high, we had to pull the building up out of the ground.
In, in this packet, Daphne, are there any elevations or any other information that would have indicated stairs? Yeah, I didn't recall any.
I don't think so.
Sure, there wasn't picture window?
No, and you can see with that, Daphne, if you go back to the one with the rear deck of the old house, they had quite a substantial, so that's where our house is. You see where their structure, the old structure was. And then they had a huge, the previous owner, Mr. Anderson, had a huge deck with a nice big size bench and um, and things. Um, so that kind of shows you what was there prior to us. There was a substantial deck with a, a bench on the side.
If you go to the site plan or the original survey map, um, that showed that deck that Michelle was describing, if you go up a little bit.
That, that original deck wasn't four feet off the ground, correct? Okay.
The bench would have been around, around that, um, which was on the south side of the deck. There was not a bench around the whole entire deck, just on the south side, kind of around the area that we're wanting the stairs to be.
Let me recap the way I see it. Plan was brought in, it was straight across. We didn't know whether it was a padded door or not. It didn't have a stairs drawn on the rear elevation. We told you to go ahead and, and do a setback so you'd be out of the setback area in the part that wasn't grandfathered. That was fine, you did that. When you did that, you submitted that revised plan to the building department, not to zoning. The building department then said, okay, um, you're going to have to change the way you, you walk out of the stairs. Because those stairs and that landing were never on the original zoning plan. Then, then you added two feet to the height of the building. Mark, is there a problem with that, by the way? Uh, when we, as a zoning board of appeals uh, agreed to okay the plan, it was two feet shorter. Was there anything, sorry, I missed the last, the last meeting that this came up? Was there actually a motion that, that passed that we granted something at that moment? Or, or did she take it back and rearrange the house so that there was no variance needed?
That's correct. We, we told her if she jogged the house, she wouldn't require a variance.
Right.
She went back and had the plans redone and then submitted them for a building permit.
So to me, that's two, that's two separate issues, Mark. I don't.
Exactly.
That, since we didn't really issue anything um, last time, I don't know that we can then go back to that last time that she came to the, to the board. Um, and say it wasn't here then, because we weren't looking at that at that point, right?
Yeah, what was before you last time, uh, I don't have, I can see if I can find that hearing notice, but I'm sure it was just the uh, uh, well, let me find the hearing notice so I can speak with facts. Actually, she, oh yeah, that's right, it's in the packet.
I see your point though. Your point is, is well taken.
Or maybe it's.
And now it's in the hands of the building inspection because it no longer required a variance. Therefore, it wasn't a determination that we had to be.
Okay, you're about to see it. It's, it's rolled down a couple pages, Daphne.
No, this is just an on case.
But then when I look at the, at what was submitted for the building permit application, looked at the site plan, there was still no indication of stairs on there. So in that location.
So the motion, I'm sorry, I was confusing what was on the screen, which is what I have on my screen. So I have it up in my screen now. So the uh, variance request back in, just in September was um, constructing a new story, re- re- new two-story residence. The structure would be setback four feet, eleven inches from the left side lot line. So that's that wasn't, that's not before, that's not germane. Um, right side lot, lot line, and that's not germane. And then twenty-seven feet, three inches from the east lot line. Um, so yeah, so it had to do with the flush nature of it. And I think uh, what the applicants proposed at the time was that they were going to comply with the side setback, but they still were requesting the rear setback. But then during discussion with, with the board, uh, the jog idea came up and, and so there was no, no need to grant a variance based on what was submitted.
Correct. So I think it's two separate variances in my mind that, that really don't have anything to do with one another. There was a variance back then, she decided to rearrange it to not require one. At that time, there was no stairs shown, so there was no need to grant a variance then. Now she's coming back with a new variance requesting a stair. Now, now the question to me becomes, so this was submitted to the building inspector and at that point, it wasn't caught, right? Essentially, at that point, it probably should have been caught that this deck was pushed over the, the rear setback line. But to Mark's, or to Paul's point, it was, it was showing up on the, on the elevations, but it's really the site plan that would reference the setback at. And if it's not shown on there.
Correct.
It's, it's for, uh, say you should have caught that, right? It's a discrepancy in the drawings essentially.
Okay, so I guess we just have to concentrate on, on whether the, the building's in fine shape as far as we're concerned, as far as the building inspection department is concerned, except for the stairs. So we have to, I guess, just zero in on the stairs.
So, look, can we review, just so you, so this idea of what was in the zoning, uh, in the plan set last fall? Um, so what you're looking at is uh, one of the elevation drawings, which if you can scroll, uh, there you go, Daphne, thank you. So this shows the right elevation and that's the front staircase, so facing the road. And then to the right, or the bottom, excuse me, um, is the, uh, yeah, so there you can see the jog with the narrow windows. That's the part that sticks out a little bit. And then there's no staircase there, as Michelle mentioned in her statement.
Right.
Uh, however, if you go to the other elevation drawing, it sounds like there was a staircase which looks like a ladder because you're looking straight at it. So um, you know, so that's, that's shown there on the, on the east elevation. Uh, but the site plan also did not indicate. Uh, well, I, I don't know. Well, let's see what the site plan.
Daphne, can you scroll back up to the south elevation of that, please?
It is.
So that's the south. And then if you go to the north, the north elevation, it doesn't show up there either?
No.
No, okay, because those two elevations, along with the site and the plan, are really the only two indications that you get the depth of what that stair would be. Like you said, Mark, the, the um, east elevation, all you see is a ladder.
So that's, that's really, that's really a moot point because there, it wouldn't be the first house that had a patio door that had that had a, a bar across it, so you can't go out of it. Okay, so building inspection. Now, we're not, we're not trying to place blame or anything. We're just trying to say, can she now build this way to get out? So as far as I'm concerned, uh, you know, it's not a solid, well, are, did we close the meeting to?
Uh, no, we didn't. I was just thinking, I was just thinking about that. Um. Is there any other responses from zoning?
Um, well, I just think if you can go to the site plan, which is where Daphne was heading, I think it would be good, because Daphne reviewed this and if she wishes to comment, uh, Daphne, feel free. Um, but I've reviewed, uh, I reviewed this a month and a half ago, so I have to look at it again now. Um, we all have to turn, is there a way to rotate that? Probably not. Thank you. So this is probably, well, maybe Daphne, if you want to explain, since you did the, ultimately did the review at the end, um, this is what you reviewed, right?
Right, yeah. So I, I reviewed this plan, um, and there is also one, the one that came after it too, the one Michelle referred to. Um, and I guess in, so this was the site plan that I looked at. I didn't really look at the other floor plans. Um, because that's more what building inspection does. And so I didn't see the stairs. Um, and then the stairs are also in the. And then the stairs are also in the the previous plan that she had also gotten approved. But when she said she was adding a basement, I just assumed that she would be digging deeper and not building, you know, bringing the whole house up another two feet, just going down further two feet. And so that's why I felt there wasn't really a need for it to go through zoning all over again. And so it was also my mistake of just not realizing that the whole building is also going up, and therefore stairs are also gonna go up. And all of that as well.
But the point, I'm sorry, the point I was trying to make with that, the site plan here, I mean, I can understand why Daphne didn't see the you know, I I can understand why she didn't see the setback, because it's labeled as thirty feet six inches. And and then on the front door on the site plan, it's labeled as stoop. You can see that right above in the middle there. If you go to the front door, it's labeled as stoop. So the front door, front steps were labeled on the site plan, but the rear wasn't.
Right.
So I am not, when I, when I have drawn these new stairs with the landings and such, I'm not using the same CAD person that I used. We should, you know, he should have labeled it. And I did go in to talk to Daphne a couple times about things and I I feel like we knew that I was raising the house and there's gonna be stairs everywhere. I mean, there's stairs in the going from the house to the garage and the garage to the house and from in and out of the house. And it's just kind of a house with stairs.
Does anybody else on the board have any direct questions of Michelle?
Yeah, I, you know, this is Mark Wolford, Michelle. And I met you at onsite there a little while back. I guess one of, one of the questions I had was the proposed step steps that you have go in front of that casement window in your lower level. And whether that is the, is that a bedroom and then therefore that's in a required egress window, which cannot be opened at this point?
It is not an egress window. It is kind of, we have like a TV area down there. So it's it's a casement window. I'm more than happy to not use that window. So I'm just trying to just trying to solve it with the least impact. So there is a, there is a casement you know, a window that would open, but we don't need to open that.
As long as it's not an egress window, is what I'm getting.
Yeah, it's not an egress. No, no, as you can see in that, thank you, Daphne, you're so good. If you can see in the bottom right slide over there, that's the window that's near a couch.
Are there other questions of Michelle? Then at this time, I'd like to close the the hearing and give us an opportunity to discuss as a board.
Close it to the public.
Well, I'm, we're just gonna close the hearing and then move it to board discussion. I'm just, I'm just following the new zoning handbook.
Yeah, what what he's doing is he's closing the public hearing where there's public, where there's input from the applicant and other residents in the area. And now it's remains a public meeting, of course, and now it's up to deliberation for the body. That's right. That's what he's saying.
All right, my architect, fellow architects on the board. How many, how many steps can you have coming out of a patio door before you have to hit a landing? City of Middleton, I think, says you can have two risers, which is one step. But then you have to have a, at least a three-foot landing. Is anyone familiar with that code?
I'm not familiar with the residential.
The idea is correct, though. This is Bob Mangus. I think that all of the plans that were probably looked at previously where stairs were shown, none of them really had a code complying landing outside of the door before you started to reverse down the stairs.
Right.
That was in error in all of the drawings that were ever submitted.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, this is pretty much an open an open structure. The neighbors have no problem with it. And to me, it's no different than if you, for instance, had a rack and put the three kayaks out in front of the house or behind the house there as far as blocking, blocking the view for a neighbor. So I don't see it as a problem. I don't know. Any other thoughts?
Well, I think in what we reviewed back in September, even if she were five feet above grade, she still would have needed those stairs, because when stairs are attached to the house above four feet, it's structure, correct, Mark?
Part of the structure, yes.
So she still would have needed a variance at that point in time. I guess part of my, a little bit of the heartburn I have is the inconsistency in the drawings. You know, going through what we had seen in September, then to what was submitted, and then even then, there was little indication there were stairs in that setback. Are there any precedents in that area, Mark, for stairs encroaching in setbacks?
Yes, she showed the bond, I'm sorry, Michelle Bond showed a two property, so not the property immediately to the south, but the second one. And the third one, especially the third one to the south.
Yeah, I had a deck and stairs going way out.
Yeah, that was, that was way over.
Yeah, and those are probably older homes. I, you know, I couldn't find, because, yeah, because Michelle did ask about this. So I looked in those zoning permits, looked in those folders, and I couldn't see any approvals. And we don't, granted for those structures, specifically no permits. We keep permits, but we don't keep plans.
Okay.
So after seven years, we used to dispose of plans. So it's very possible, especially with the house three units down. It's possible that that was, you know, I think that's an older home, and it's possible that it preexisted, or maybe it was maybe a previous owner added, you know, I don't know what happened to those properties in other words. But each case is supposed to stand on its own merits and obviously get the permits that are required and the comply with the zoning that's in place at the time of construction. So.
Now, we can't refer this back to the September meeting. This is a totally different situation. She she did everything. We 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 gave her the, we gave her the okay at the September meeting to change the plan, which she did. And now it became into the hands of the building inspection department. So now we're treating a separate issue, basically, which is the stairs. So you know, once again, in my opinion, there's history on this lake here of things like this happening. It's not a solid structure. It's not blocking anyone's view. The neighbors don't have a problem with it. So that's, that's my take on it.
I I agree, I agree with you, Mark. My, my sense is exactly the same as yours. I don't see what there really is an issue. I mean, where the water is, there's, there are plenty. I think we need to bend over backwards to accommodate people that are trying to do something that's you know, for the good of the public. My take is, I I think, you know, ideally, this would have been caught when it was submitted to the building inspector and it wasn't. I think the intent, although it wasn't always clearly demonstrated, was to have a sliding door and a stair. And I think they're going to the effort to make that intrusion into the south setback as minimal as as possible, according to code. So to me, it's it's kind of an unfortunate miss, but I I'd hate to punish someone that just built a brand-new house on the lake and isn't allowed to have that, or you know, back rear access to it. I agree.
And you know, quite honestly, if they drop the level of the lake one of these days, like they're talking about doing, the ordinary high watermark may be ten feet out further, and then she won't even be in the in the setback.
Right.
Who knows? I guess my advice to Michelle, though, is as a builder contractor, you should know this kind of stuff. Whoever was building your house should have known that that a stairs can't go in a setback if it's over four feet off, great. So there's a little slap on the wrist, but I I'm okay with it.
I'm moving. We think about.
We gotta have a motion first.
Yeah, we gotta have a, well, do we need to discuss, go over the the hardship?
I think the hardship is the existing condition and the set of circumstances that led to the existing condition.
And that's significant.
What was her, what did she list as her? Well, that, you know, you know, reading, okay, she was notified that it was noncompliant when the inspector came through. I
The the original, I'm sorry to interrupt, the original application has the original hardship statement. You might want to look at that, too.
I'm just kind of, I just want to review is that there isn't anything that's self-imposed? Because self-imposed isn't anything that we can consider as a hardship, so. So are we going to consider these statements of hardships? Okay. All right, then.
Yes, another hardship would be the fact that that the owner was under the impression from the building inspection department that everything was okay. And then, and then after, after the CO is is issued, they say it's not okay.
Oh, right, when she got the initial building permit, you're saying.
So maybe, you know, if it had been caught early, when it should have been in the beginning, she could have done something different. Well, I make, I can make a motion.
Yeah, let's, let's have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance to to build the non-conforming staircase of the, out of the rear of the house facing the lake.
Okay.
Hardships are, as we talk, Mark, do you have enough down for hardships? Mark Wolford?
I'm I'm here. I just had to unmute myself, and I'm thinking about how to answer your question. I've been taking notes, obviously, and we haven't recorded, so I can go back, but basically, what I'm hearing you say, Mark, is the owner was under the, well, you said the owner was under the impression that everything was okay, and so they were working in good faith. You didn't say that, but that's essentially what you're saying, right?
Correct.
And
The violation was not pointed out until after the, was it after this certificate of occupancy?
At the time of occupancy is when it became.
After the house was built.
So the build, the building permit was issued.
Probably in October.
With the condition of the certificate, or the building permit was issued in right around October 1st. I don't know what day exactly. And zoning sign up was late September. And then the certificate of occupancy was mid-April, April 20th, or something, something around there. So in terms of the hardship, the you know, you've got this statement here. I guess I would appreciate for the minutes if you could call out exactly what what in the statement you're serving, you're citing as the basis. So because I'm looking at, Mark, you'd said, you asked about the steps some out of the patio door. Oh, no, that was a question, Russ. Yeah, I guess I could use a little help with for the minutes on what you mean by what what the hardship is. So are you telling, essentially, the circumstances is what I have right now, that this existing condition and set of circumstances that led to this condition is what I heard you saying, that it broke down. And then, Paul, you mentioned there's nothing that's self-imposed, because that can't be, or you want to ensure there's nothing that's self.
It'd be very, right.
That's, yeah. And then, Mark, you said the owner was under the impression from the building inspector that everything was okay. Working in good faith. So that's what I documented so far.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
So the motion is to grant the variance to allow the staircase as presented tonight, essentially. Is that what you're saying to?
Well, no, her, yeah, her revised one, right?
Yeah. Because that appears to meet the building code, which was part of the problem and why it was flagged. Okay.
Right, but I think, you know, they aren't going to be able to have a, I was, okay, yeah, we're fine. They'll need some more supports under that landing, because there's no ledger board up against the house.
Well, that's, yeah, that's obviously not a zoning issue. So so basically, what you're granting is, those are three feet wide, it looks like, so it comes out six feet. Is that what I'm seeing? Three plus three?
Yep.
Three and three, but it's actually encroaching, what, four feet?
No, it's, that's, that's all encroaching. The three plus three is all an encroachment.
Well, the setback is, yeah.
Encroaching.
It's a six-foot encroachment.
Yeah.
Yeah. So can, can you guys correct me if I'm wrong? The the three feet, is that measured, should that be measured inside of the railing? Right now, it's including the railing.
Well, in a staircase, you can have a handrail that invades the minimum.
A handrail, but, a handrail, but this is a guardrail.
Yeah. I believe, I believe you can.
Okay.
This is, this is just looks like a little wrought iron, a little skinny half inch.
Yep.
The hearing notice was written for the deck and surface will extend six feet into the rear setback area. That's how it was written, so.
Okay.
All right, so Mark made a motion to approve. And is there a second?
I seconded.
Who is that?
John.
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any names? Okay, the motion carries to approve that stair variance as as Mark is, will be indicating in his minutes.
All right.
And then do we have any other action from Mark? I don't, I don't think so, correct? Okay, then. Moving on to our next agenda item. Mark, would you like to review the application?
Sure. So this is the applicant is Paul Haviland, who I believe, there he is, he's present of twenty-four thirteen Middleton Beach Road. He's requesting variances from the minimum side. Maximum locked coverage and maximum height for the detached garage. The applicant's requesting approval to replace the existing single-level twenty-four by twenty-four garage with a twenty-one-foot-tall, twenty-six by twenty-nine detached garage that is setback eight inches or two feet eight inches to the foundation. From the left side lot line, the lot coverage with the new structure would be forty-three and a half percent, including eight and a half percent for an existing patio. And then I cite the sections there that limit a lot coverage to thirty-one percent. Require a minimum four-foot, eight-inch sides at setback and a maximum height for detached garage of fifteen feet.
Any other staff reporting, Mark?
No, and I did not receive any communications. Actually, you know what? That might not be, I should have double-checked that. Go ahead. I might. I'm gonna do a search in my emails, because something rings a bell right now, so.
I'm a little, I'm a little out of order here. Who, who is here, the applicant, to speak on behalf of this application?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Haviland, and I'm the applicant.
Paul, would you like to go through and just discuss your, your, your application with us?
Please, yes. So I have an existing garage that's approximately twenty-four by twenty-four in size. It already has the side yard encroachment. in size, it already has the side yard encroachment, so I'm not trying to move the foundation any closer. The, it was, I purchased this home in August of last year, and it was, the garage was either going to be torn down by the previous owner or tried to be repaired to some extent, it is in pretty bad shape, there's a lot of rot on the interior framing. But that's, yeah, so that's the current condition, and then the intent is to add a second story to the garage. Extend it really wide and a little bit extra deep to be able to allow for a staircase up to access the second, an interior staircase to access the second story. And then widen it by two feet as well, but not further the encroachment on the north lot line. And then also, at the same time, attempt, well, not attempt, but bring up the character and the quality of the garage to be similar to that of the home. So we'll be using the same building materials, the garage will be smart siding with cedar accents and stone facade.
Anything else you'd like to share with us?
In regards to the hardships. So our home has a crawl space that is not adequate for any storage. The crawl space varies from about twelve inches in dirt floor to about three feet with some pea gravel, and there is yeah, so it's through a scuttle hole is you know, unsuitable for storage, and so the intention, again, the, one of the hardships is for the storage. Second hardship is to hopefully maintain as much of the existing landscaping as possible, there's some pretty cool trees there, that are there that we're going to try to keep along my southern border, including Japanese maple, it's giant for Japanese maples as as those trees go. And then you know, also be able to maintain a larger width area to allow for future vehicles if needed for any type of maintenance or construction to get back there as well, along will be my southern border. I have discussed the project with the neighbors, two to the north and two to the south. Everyone is has been in support of the project, and then the neighbor immediately to the north and neighbor immediately to the south, I believe both have provided written support, and Mark, I think the neighbor to the south sent you an email today or yesterday.
Yes, I was gonna mention that as part of the record, I did find that, so.
Did you get the Stephens to sign a letter?
Yes, they, well, I don't know that it was signed yet, they were trying to make DocuSign work, and we were having some struggles with that, I forwarded Mark some email correspondence that included the letter that they were pointing to sign, and I think, and I can make sure that he has it, if he doesn't, a, a note from them saying that they're in support and they'd be happy to do anything they needed, but that they were relatively unavailable, so I'll find that.
Okay.
I'm confirming receipt of that message from Dennis and Kate Stephan, twenty four seventeen Middleton Beach Road. And the other one is John Fultenhauer. I just had it on my screen and now it's gone.
I believe it's twenty four eleven Middleton Beach Road.
Yeah, twenty four eleven, thank you. Also in support.
One note that I didn't know at the time of my application was that the height is actually to the mid gable as opposed to the maximum height, so in my requested variance, as well as in my plans, you see that it's actually used the maximum height of the garage, just gonna be just nine one six, as opposed to the mid gable height. We have a relatively low pitched hip roof, so it's not a significant difference, but it would probably make a difference of about one and a half feet to two feet.
I'm just, for the record, are you, so you're saying that you actually measured more conservatively?
You measured to the top. I measured. I'm sorry. Correct, I measured to the top and I actually rounded up.
But you only needed to measure to the midpoint.
That is correct.
So that's good, if it were the other way, we would have a problem, okay.
Mark, on a garage, don't you have to go to the peak?
Midpoint of the highest.
That's the house, so what about a, what about?
Building height is, building height is defined in the zoning code. Unrelated to whether it's what type of structure it is, it's a I have it right here.
Look up detached garage.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that in a second, let me first, well, okay, I'll start with that one.
While he's doing that, my name is Emily Kuhn, I live at two four two five Middleton Beach Road, and I fully support Paul's plans for the garage and the other thing, it's, it's, it's hard around here to get you know, enough space, and his garage does need some, some upgrades, his house is beautiful. We're so happy that he and his family moved here, so if he needs to move forward to upgrade his lot, then I fully support that.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you as well.
Are there other neighbors that wish to speak out?
Sure, this is Rick Lemon, twenty five nineteen Middleton Beach Road. And I fully support the plan as drawn, too, I think it's a good looking building, there are a lot of two story garages on our street. Storage is a huge problem here, because most of us don't have basements because of the high water table. And I think what he's proposing is entirely reasonable, and I would support it.
Thank you, Rick.
Does any, any of the board members have any other questions for Paul? Oh, there's another one that came up, Mark, Paul Demusso.
Okay, and you, there might be other speakers, too, so there's a registrant, oh, Paul Demusso, okay. And it's handy to have all the Middleton Beach, having two Middleton Beach Road properties on the same variance hearing with similar neighbors. Consolidated everyone's time.
Just copy him over.
It wouldn't be the first time.
Well, and I know Emily happens to like a lot of meetings, so although she's gone now, she didn't hear that.
Yeah, did you get Marilyn, I think? That was, that was prior.
Yeah, and there's, there are a couple, there's another person present, a couple other people present, actually, phone number, too, so I don't know if anybody else wants to speak.
Is there anyone else on the, on the meeting that would wish, wishes to speak?
Katie, you had a comment?
The garage height rule is burned into her brain.
Okay, just, you remember, do you remember the garage on Park Street?
Yes.
It was to the middle of the gable, not the total height of the garage.
Okay.
Right, and so I'm actually about to read that, Katie, but what is etched in your brain, I'm just gonna etch it further.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It says, they must not be taller than the principal structure, and in no case more than fifteen feet in height, now, I can see Mark, your comment about in no case more than fifteen feet in height, doesn't that mean to the top? But height is defined in the, in the back as
Under definitions?
Under definitions, building height, measurement, a distance to be measured from the mean ground level immediately adjoining the front of the structure to the top of the cornice of a flat roof, which this isn't, Mansard shed roof arch, or to the midpoint of the highest gable on a pitched or hip roof. So based on that definition, I've applied with the, the famous Park Street case, and then now this and others along the years, to the midpoint of the highest gable of a detached garage, is how, how we have interpreted that even since before I was here.
Wow, I must be losing it, I thought in the past we took garages to the peak, full height. All right, I stand corrected. So we're not talking a height of twenty one
Twenty one foot, no.
Whatever, so, all right.
What is the new height? I didn't get that in my records.
We do a little math.
Somebody's gonna have to do the math in that picture.
Oh, it's not, it's not labeled.
It's, it's not labeled there, I believe it's gonna be I haven't met, there's a whole bunch of architects, I'll defer to I believe it's seventeen feet, ten inches to my soffits, and then a total of twenty one foot, five inches, nine and three, thirty seconds. Average those numbers.
Oh, good, there's like a bunch of people doing this calculation, so I don't have to worry.
Four and a half feet, roughly.
Oh, you can't say roughly.
Well, four, four and a half feet.
The peaks, or you take half of that?
Well, it looks like, like he mentioned, from his soffit to his, to his peak, four and a half feet.
Right, so you got to take half of that, that'd be the midpoint.
Right.
So.
So essentially subtract two feet, two and a quarter feet from the maximum, right?
Yeah.
So nineteen and a quarter, is that right?
Yes.
I don't have a calculator, I think you guys all have your calculators and stuff.
Nineteen two.
Right, that's what I had.
Nineteen, two and a half, probably, whatever.
Let's call it nineteen three.
It's above the fifty.
Okay.
Kaffney, can you show the photograph of the front of the of the existing garage with the neighboring garage next to it, the blue garage?
Yeah.
Yeah, good job.
She's really good at this, that's why she's doing this.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That is Stefan's house, that's a house I designed, so that
You're an expert.
Yeah, well. That garage, well, that's a eight foot door, sixteen, eighteen about to the peak. But because of the slope of the roof. Anyway, it's pretty massive, is what I'm saying, you know?
Yeah.
I don't, in other words, the proposed new garage next door is not going to dwarf the neighbor.
Well, it, it, we're getting a little bit into a discussion with the board, do we have any other questions directly for Paul? Or the applicant?
Can you point out where the Japanese tree is?
So if you're looking at the picture to the left of the front facade of the garage is.
Yeah, right there.
It's that one right there. And I actually put a jog in the garage to help save that tree, so if you look at the first floor plan of the garage.
Oh, okay. So you won't cut the rut system?
That's the, that's the whole, yeah, that's the whole.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mark Olbitz?
Mark, this is also increasing the lot coverage, right? Yes.
Correct, yes.
Forty three point five percent, and the old one was.
We were increasing lot coverage by one hundred and forty seven square feet.
Hundred and forty seven square feet. Okay.
And Paul, you mentioned lack of storage is one of your hardships. Due that, due to you don't have a basement, do you have any attic space or any other crawl spaces that could be used for storage in your home?
No, none, there is no attic, I bet, of really any, any kind, it's a flat roof. And then the part that's not flat is kind of more cathedral ceiling, and so slope roof interior to the bedrooms.
Yep.
And no basement, you said, too, didn't you say that?
That is correct, there is no, there is no basement. So in summary, no, there is zero interior storage space.
And then, Daphne, could you show the floor plan again, just showing the overall dimensions of the garage itself?
This one or the site plan above it?
No, I think that's fine, so it's.
Up, or go up a little more. Here we go.
Six by twenty nine is the, is the envelope, and then with the cutout, the southeast corner.
Yeah, by no means is that a huge garage, it's a two car.
Yeah.
And the only reason it's twenty nine deep is to get the stairs up.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
And the existing garage is about ready to fall down, correct?
That is correct. Which, by the way, I really wish it had, because it's insured.
Okay, are there other questions for zoning or Paul? Any other residents, then I'd like to close the hearing now and discuss as a board.
Hey, Mark Olbitz?
Mark Wilford.
Do we have a sanitary sewer easement anywhere between the house and the garage?
Uh, probably.
Can you pull that up on the plan, I can't, the copy I made here doesn't come out dark enough to show it. I just want to make sure we're not invading the sewer, sanitary sewer easement with the new garage.
I don't think that was shown on the drawing, but it looks to me like the applicant was, and I don't remember our discussion now, Paul, but I, I believe you were well aware of it.
That's correct.
You don't, and ask him quickly.
May I?
I'm asking you if you.
Okay. So this, the proposed garage is not impeded on the sewer setbacks and the sewer easement, and we will not be as far east as the, as the Stephens' house, which is to the north.
Okay.
Zoning should verify that, should they not?
We will, it's actually our building inspector, too, but with the gap there of sixteen, I think it is. I can't read the number right now, but I'm actually, I should look at my, oh, yeah, it's twenty six, sorry.
Yep, twenty six.
Yeah, there's plenty of room there. Not worry about it. I'm glad you brought it up, Mark, thank you.
Can we just review his hardships again real quick?
Well, I think I can a little synopsis, the existing garage is crap, it's falling down, don't put crap in the report, Mark. And there's a severe lack of, of storage in the house.
I heard you say dilapidated, Mark.
Dilapidated, that's what I said, yes.
Well, I guess I should back up, is there any other discussion? If not, does someone want to make a motion?
So. I made the last one, someone want to make one?
Just to, just to recap, there's, there's three things, right, that are being asked for variance, there's a side setback, a height requirement. And in that area, the lot area, yeah, okay.
So addressing the heights, there are plenty of other garages on that street that are as high, if not higher.
Correct, I don't know that that's a
Well, the, the, the character of the neighborhood has been an issue that we've called into play before. Well, the, the, the character of the neighborhood has been an issue that we've called into play before, especially downtown. But this is the same thing, these old, these buildings here. So it would be in character.
I don't know that that's a hardship though, Mark. Like, I agree with you that it, it doesn't limit, you know, doing this. But I don't know that, that you can, you can't really use an adjacent property as a hardship for this particular property.
Everyone, everyone is entitled to have adequate storage for their personal effects. And if he has no basement and no other place to store and he has no attic, the only place to store anything is going to be over the garage.
And I think that's a legitimate, I mean, I think we've used that in the past.
Yes, we have.
Yep. And there, Mark, Mark Wolford's right there. There are a number of properties, I think, in this area where we have had these same projects come before us.
I wasn't using that as excusing a hardship. I was just saying.
Gotcha, sorry.
So you're right to bring up the fact that there are three issues we are addressing.
And so as far as the, the side setback, it's not encroaching any further than the current building? That's my understanding. So I know we've looked at that in the past as kind of a hardship, you know, to, to move something that's currently non-conforming into conforming.
Yeah, great.
And it, while it does look like there'd be room to shift it to the south, it would impede on existing vegetation.
Yeah.
Mature vegetation.
Yeah, also our new member brought up a good issue and that is as far as safety to get emergency vehicles in between. You know, if you need a fire truck to, to get a little closer to the house or something, it's nice to have a little extra room on one side of the garage.
And then the height, the height variance, Mark, what, what's allowed? You probably said it before and I spaced out.
Fifteen feet to the midpoint of the peak, of the slope. And we had what, seventeen-three or something like that, or?
Nineteen.
Nineteen-two.
Nineteen-two.
I put nineteen-three down just to
Okay.
Because that's a quarter and I figured it was about a quarter, so.
Okay, so it's a four.
I think you need that height in order to have storage spaces legal because I saw in the drawing, it looked like you've got a clear height on that second story of about seven and a half feet. They already brought it down from eight feet, which is often used. So I think they're taking steps with a shallow pitch and the lower height to bring it as close to a lower height as they can.
Yep.
And the second floor setback.
Yep, and the second floor setback.
That is massive.
It reduces the mass, it reduces the volume of the building.
All good points, so.
And as I look at this, this looks like a very attractive solution and improvement to the property and it's highly supported. The fact that there isn't storage is the primary hardship and I think this is a well-conceived solution. So I don't, given the neighborhood and the set of conditions that exist on this street and we're not pushing the envelope on any anything from previous variances, I think this looks like a worthy project.
Are you making a motion, Bob?
I could.
Well, let me, is there any other? I guess I should, you know, entertain. Is there a motion?
I can make a motion to approve based on the fact that there is not storage. Storage is the hardship. And the three conditions of increase in area, increase in height and continuing the existing side yard setback all are part of the solution that yields a project that's as good as probably can be done.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Who are you recognizing?
Mark, Mark was the loudest. All in favor?
Hi.
Nay? All right, then congratulations, Paul. Your, your variance passed.
Thank you, everyone.
With that, are there any other agenda items?
There are none.
Okay, then do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at six thirty-six?
Make that motion to adjourn the reading. Second.
John and Bob?
Yes.
All right. Meeting adjourned.
Does the board want to stick around and or do we have enough information on Marty? Mark, in order to?
Well, if you want to make a statement again, that's fine. I think you had made, so I could put it at the end of the meeting. I mean, in some ways it fits better at the beginning because it's, there was no other agenda items. So I guess I'll put it at the beginning, but if there's anything else somebody wanted to say or reflect as a consensus statement, that would be fine.
Want to save it for our next meeting and put it on the agenda? Would that be easier for you?
Oh, it's not a matter of easier. I think it's appropriate to do it now.
We could have Marty come to the meeting and thank him in person.
He could have just logged on tonight.
Well, you know, when, when John was retired, they actually had an award for him.
Yeah, and the mayor, I hope, he usually recognizes people at some point.
That'd be nice.
So I don't doubt that will be done. So I will have the minutes reflect that the if I say we'd say consensus, I'll, I'll just simply say that zoning board members express their thanks to Marty Burkholder for his eighteen years of service.
Volunteer service.
Yeah. That's pretty awesome.
And Mark, are you sitting in the conservancy? Am I? Mark Opitz. Yeah, Mark is. Mark's been kicked out of his house.
He's got that green. Now he's on the beach.
So, all right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night. Good night, bye. Bye, everybody. Good night.